All right, Richard is here. It is 5:15. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's March 1st for the Mayor City Council Meeting. Jane, if you'd please take roll call.
Shaven.
President.
Kroger.
Here.
Blatt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
And you all received the agenda ahead of time. There wasn't an amendment sent out.
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Yes, and that is displayed on the screen.
I do have that. Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph.
Second.
Second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Okay, and please state any conflicts of interest to theorize tonight. Item number two then is the consent agenda, which tonight includes the minutes of the February 15th council meeting. Claims list number 1261 in the amount of $123,333.90. A renewal application by the Knights of Columbus of Harlan for a Class C liquor license, and this would be a five-day license. A renewal application by Hy-Vee for a Class C beer permit and Class B wine permit, and another renewal application for Hy-Vee for a Class C liquor license, a Class C beer permit, and a Class B wine permit. And those are for each of their two locations for Hy-Vee. Any questions on consent agenda items?
Can we pull the $20,000 off?
Yes, did we not? Okay. So we had the second payment for the Catalyst Grant of $20,000. We're going to pull that out of the consent agenda that you received.
And vote on it later on. On item F.
Yep. So with that pulled out, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger.
Second.
Second by Christensen.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
A, B, and C, aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item 3A then, resolution number 2480 to adopt final plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Harlan Airport Taxi Lane Project. And there's an FAA number there, you can all see. And I'll let Gene introduce Eric Johnson with Kirkham and Michael and explain a little bit about this project.
Yes. The Airport Commission is the continued improvements on the airside, which is, again, FAA just a reminder, always wants to ensure that your surfaces, both starting with runway, parallel taxiways, and then local taxiways are their priority levels. This project was on our AIP list, or CIP list, with FAA did a preliminary application last fall, and then has led up to getting a full plan set. You approved the engineering agreement back in October, and there was a 30% submittal to the FAA December 1st to January. And then the Airport Commission met last week, and then recommended the full plan set to then go to bid. The FAA, and Eric may expand on this, they've moved timing up a whole month this year. So a year ago with our apron rehab project, we were doing the same step end of March. FAA has pushed timelines up, so we're now doing it the 1st of March. So this is a resolution to adopt the final plans and then direct to advertise. And with that, I'll turn it over to Eric. And I do have the full plan set. They've got a couple of paper copies. So what will be submitted to the FAA is a full plan set, so which are these drawings, the specifications, which are a light 346 pages, and thought we would save a three or two with that, as well as the engineer's report, which was, that was available back in January was available. We've got those available as well. So with that, Eric, comments you want to make on the project, and then any other timing? We see his...
Gene, this is Corey, and I can fix the project if I have some issues.
Yeah, we see Eric's still connected here, Corey. Thanks for joining. You can go ahead and take it away. Corey Gaston is also with Kirkham Michael, works with our airports, and was also instrumental in preparing this plan set. So if you'd like to make any comments on the plan set, and I will, one other item, Corey, is I will pull up P1, which is in Paul, which was also in the council members. That's really the summary of what's being done in a visual, which was reviewed by the commission last week. So I'll have that, P1 up in the council chambers here.
Okay. Project is a taxiway reconstruction project. We're achieving some FAA safety measures with this reconstruction. Also, replacing some very low-scoring concrete. I think the lowest score in TCI evaluation section was like a 28 or something like that. Anything below 40 is a recommended full replacement. Back for the total reconstruction and not doing rehab of the project, we did do it as an alternate bid project. So the main bid is the main taxi lane leading north up to hangars eight and nine, if I remember correctly, and then that east-west northern side taxiway up part of the main bid. And then the alternate bid is that second-most-northerly taxiway, east-west running, and that is being reconfigured to meet FAA standards for their taxi lane obstruction object-free area. So we're re-centering it, the taxiway in between those two hangars, to get that safety standard and continue to be FAA compliant and eligible then for FAA funding. The bid date is set for March 25th. And based on the funding from FAA with their AIP grant and with the new bipartisan infrastructure law money, we believe it is enough to complete the main bid area, and if bids come at lower than expected, possibly do the alternate bid as well. I guess that's kind of the project in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, more than happy to answer. So, Gene, can you hear me now okay?
Hi, Eric. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I certainly apologize. Maybe it was Putin invading here for a minute, but Corey did a good summary. I guess I really don't have anything else to add. It's a great project. I'm really happy with the, I've been working with the airports and cities for the last 21 years now, and it's been great on our end, and it's what I've really enjoyed, watching the airport grow, the cooperation between the commissioners and the city. And, you know, the airport's growing, and obviously that's always a good sign. It's a, can be, you know, a very important economic development tool, you know, your airport. A lot of people utilize your airport for a lot of different things that, you know, we all don't realize every day that happens, that the airport manager, Scott, keeps us very well informed at each commission meeting on the activities, and even having some of the smaller jets land there. So, so again, like Gene mentioned earlier, this is kind of the priority the FAA has set forth to with your, with their priority for the funding. You know, we've got the runway in really good shape, the main runway, the taxiways. We're going to be doing an apron renovation project to take care of some of the concrete that is, you know, failed within the apron, and then of course this project now. So, so anyway, just a quick side note, but thanks, Corey, for jumping in and saving me there.
And I did pull up, or we have on our TV monitors here, some of the photos within the report that's submitted to the FAA, and this, for those who have been on site, some of, a few of you have, but validates the pavement condition. And as you can see, great photos here that show the, these are within the hangar areas, which is the proposed construction. So you can see between eight and nine, you can see where water pools. This asphalt here has not, I'm sure, been tended to for 30-plus years. Pictures worth a thousand words, and this is what the project relates to. And this, once again, will be 10% local match. And if anyone...
And I think, Gene, aren't most of our hangars full now?
We are at 100% occupancy, yes, which we've been at that for six or seven months with one on the waiting list.
That's a really good indicator that the FAA uses for, you know, the growth and continuing funding of an airport, and prioritizing airports as well for their funding.
Not only are we at 100% occupancy, but we've raised the rent on a few of the hangars. We've put in the new bifold swing doors, hydraulic doors. And with this kind of project, you can justify raising the rents a little bit and keep the hangars full at the same time, so.
Yeah.
Good projects.
And, yeah, as far as the local match, and with, there are funds there. This has been budgeted for, there, within our capital savings and what's been put into that budget line item for the past few years, there's no additional budget change request for any of these items.
Any other questions for Corey, or Eric, or Gene? Anything else you guys want to add, Eric or Corey, before we move on?
No, just really appreciate the opportunity to assist working with the airports and the Airport Commission and the city. I think it's going to be another great project, so.
Okay, thanks for tuning in tonight and being available for comment.
Yes. Our pleasure.
Okay.
I guess I do have one quick thing. Corey also does a part-time job of refereeing at the Harlan High School basketball game, so.
Did he do the last game up in Dancing?
He'd see every once in a while. Don't hold it again.
All right. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
With that information, then I would look for a motion to approve resolution number 2480 as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, and the second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you. Item 3B then, ordinance 20... Thank you, Eric.
You did a very good reading.
You guys do.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ordinance 202204, amending chapter 69.08 subsection 28 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Harlan. And this is related to parking along Cyclone Avenue. This is the second readings. Gene, you want to go over this one more time with us?
We'll just continue with the photo show. This is the second reading. Primary driver for this is improving safety down around J.J. Jensen. And presently, from Fourth Street, so the red line here from Fourth all the way to the west, Highway 59 is no parking both sides. This would include, or this change would make it no parking both sides in the yellow area as well, and accommodated for with the new off-street parking with the batting fielding facility that will be constructed. And we've had to City Hall, no comments or feedback on the first reading, unless there's been others coming, Jane, that I'm not aware of, so.
Council members received any feedback? Nor have I. Any other comments, questions then?
And as far as time sensitivity, there's not any rush to, or at least on the improvement side, or to, before any activity happens there, to wait for a third reading, but that's totally at your discretion.
So I guess I would look for a motion then to approve the second reading of ordinance 202204.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger.
Second.
Second by Blatt.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for the second reading. Does anybody want to make a motion to dispense with the third reading, or would you rather wait and do that next meeting?
There's no hurry, really.
Okay, no rush, so we'll just move on then. Item 3C then, ordinance 202205, amending section 3.01 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Harlan pertaining to ward boundaries.
So following the census that was, the last census that was done, cities have an opportunity to change their boundaries and re-precinct, change wards if they need to, depending on the population of who's, who's in those areas. We were contacted by the Secretary of State, Lance Kramer, and he said that our original ordinance that was done in 2011 was fine, none of our wards changed, but he wanted one amendment added, and that's number five, one precinct shall serve all wards. So we do not have separate precincts. We only have, we have four wards. We have one precinct in which all the wards are a part of. So he wants that terminology added to that ordinance, and he just needs it passed and sent back to them so they can finish their paperwork.
This was the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're looking at consistency, and our city attorney is reviewing this as well. Again, it doesn't change anyone voting, doesn't change which ward you're in, it's language update.
Can we tell when we get our special audit done, we'll get right on this? Because we're awful busy. So any, any questions?
Good luck with that.
Okay, don't see any, so I would look for a motion then to approve ordinance 202205.
Motion.
Motion by Peterson, and the second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3D, to review the street closing permit from Bruce Berger to move a house along Seventh Street there.
We've continued, kept you aware of this for a couple of months now, and local contractor Bruce Berger contracts with a firm up north that actually does the structural move, and that has now been set for Thursday is when the move will happen. Need your formal review, or just blessing for this. We did put out, pushed out public awareness and public notice because this contract has brought other homes into town. This happens to be in a highly, much more visible as well as more traffic area. So appreciate all the way from HMU, KNOD, the newspaper. Here's one of the public notices we pushed out, starting Monday morning. So again, from Durant to Baldwin, we closed a portion of the day tomorrow and a portion of the day Thursday. All businesses were notified, minimize surprise there, which was in your packet as well. It wasn't in color, but just for those curious georges, this is the Baldwin to Durant, and this is the path that the house will, it'll come right in front of City Hall, go up Eighth Street to the north, down to Cyclone, back east one block, up Seventh, to its final resting spot on Main, where the foundation has currently been set. But in coordination with law enforcement, EMA, and Thursday will be the actual, the structure will move. Tomorrow's a prep day, and you'll see even a few cones out there today.
They're out there today already. It's already blocked off, so.
Yeah, the street's blocked.
Okay, and may have been done late today then for tomorrow morning. We've coordinated with post office for, so again, it'd be temporary disruption for folks that are best to push out as much communication, but it will free up some green space for the owner of the property and also fill in some space down in the residential area.
Any comments?
Questions or comments? Would ask for your approval of this, as they're getting ready to, you know, we've been talking about it for a few months, just get the final date narrowed down to get this property moved.
And the promotion then to approve the street closing permit for Bruce Berger Construction.
Motion.
Motion by Christensen.
Second.
And the second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, thanks. Item 3E, we need to set the public hearing date of March 15th for the proposed fiscal year 2223 annual budget.
So this is the time in our budget season in which we will publish this public hearing, notice of public hearing, so that anyone from the public can attend or reach out to us with questions. And this hearing will be on the 15th, so our next council meeting at 5:15. The levy rate, 16.3581, or 835, so 16.35835. And that is, that's lower about 2.82% from last year's levy, so about 47 cents per thousand. The valuations were up about almost 4%, 3.99, and additional property tax asking is $40,599. Thank you all for all your work and helping us work through all the numbers, all your guidance.
You guys did a lot more than me.
Somebody have any questions about the public hearing setting in?
Nope.
This we published in the paper, as is required, and filing that, or have to have it to the state by March 31st.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It does take several months to get to this point, so thank you and Gene for all of your guidance and expertise in this area. We just kind of roll along and nod and ask a few questions, and you're always good about answering those questions, so appreciate your help on that. So with that, I would look for a motion then to approve the public hearing date of March 15th at 5:15 PM.
Motion.
Motion by Blatt.
Second.
Second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Okay, item 3F then is to review the 601 Court Street Catalyst Grant Development Agreement and Completion Timeline for the second payment of $20,000. And this is the property that I think some of us went on a tour of, and nice improvements there. Gene, do you have any information you want to share with us on this payment number two?
And this is the property at 601 Courts. With the Catalyst Grant, which is a state-funded grant, we're essentially the pass-through, but we did, we have a development agreement to ensure that that, all the conditions are met, and the project reaches a completion status. And what you all reviewed and approved back in November was, as far as releasing the $60,000 of funds that the city currently has passed from the state, is having some checkpoints. And that first checkpoint has been completed, which was in your packet. That was by January 15th, that these steps were completed. The property owner needed to complete it to contact us the week before, and then due to some family situations with that, we weren't able to, and some of that we were able to visualize from the outside because it related to windows and glass, right? But then Roger Beeson, our building inspector, and I've got a few photos to share with you as well, but this reflects that these key items for the first release of $20,000 have been done. This reflects the upper story window, the upper windows, those are all new with the Larson windows. You see the tag's still on there, so those are complete and installed. The main floor glass, that was from Red Oak Glass. We've got, we've got another photo here of a, oh, there's the upper story windows that shows that complete. This is the retail front, and then this is all new glass with framing. That step is complete. Show you some of the interior photos. Can't see this real well, but this is some of the HVAC work up in the ceiling. You can see some insulation as well. Guess we should have changed our backlight or needed maybe Bob or Mike there with their better cameras to, showing some additional ventilation or HVAC work. Actually, you'll see some steps here where actually it wasn't part of this first step, but there's some plumbing, and actually this is ventilation for plumbing here. You can see some conduit already for wiring electrical, which is in the next phase already. See some additional plumbing complete. See some electrical here, some new wiring, so I know that this contractor, Wingard Electric, has been in and done some work. Progress is being made, is the key point here, and some other electrical as well. Comments, questions? And per, I guess, per the status of agreement, at least on the administration side, we recommend releasing the next $20,000.
Do they feel they're still on target for their completion date of May 31st?
Yes, and, yeah, we can see yes, to have until June, or July 1st actually is the, we asked for May 31st.
IDAs.
With the traction being made or progress.
Good deal. Any questions? Okay, I'd look for a motion then to go ahead and award the second payment of $20,000.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger.
Second.
Second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Motion carries. As promised, we will have a city administrators' report tonight. We'll not skip that. So, Gene, you would like to take over?
Thank you, Mayor. On the overhead, as Jane was speaking, I did pull up this colorful trend chart that we've developed the past few years, and which, you'd reviewed this at one of our last budget hearings. Believe this is helpful, or helpful tools. We show trend lines where we've come from, where we're at. So as Jane referenced, the, and try to, again, expand this a little bit. But again, year over year, so last year the levy was 16.83, dropping, just under 3% drop in the levy down to 16.35 valuation, which is the red line, jumping up almost 4%, and that's the average of commercial, industrial, ag, residential. And then this is specifically shows the green line again, is that increase or change in property tax dollars, and so 1.33%. And again, if you look at cost of goods and services and cost of doing business, that's a very palatable number. And then as far as the sheer, the pure tax dollars additional being requested changes, last year was $43,000, this year it's almost down to $40,000. So just wanted to accentuate that. Again, I'll likely have this pulled up again the 15th for the public hearing, but again, this shows the trend lines with, again, the red line being valuations, and then the blue bars being levy, and we made a concerted effort to manage those appropriately, so pictures help validate that. Staying with a few other items since we got you directed to the screen, I didn't have this one pulled up. But this was a late entry for the photo show today from our Parks Department, but it's been updated with initiative to continue replacing park signage. With the nice weather this week, I believe three additional park signs will be replaced. This is one that was done at Potter Park, and this follows a similar theme and design that was determined by the that was determined by the park board and follows a similar theme that was done with the initial one at J.J. Jensen. And the additional ones will follow this red and, red and white with that black angle iron look. So that just got completed today and Mother Nature is cooperating very nicely. Also speaking of nice weather, we, our engineer that is designing and the, putting together a design and alternatives for the City Hall parking lot, they were here today. We met with them on site. And expect to have on the March 15th meeting, a recommended specification. There's essentially two, or there are two approaches to replacing the parking lot. One is a full, a full removal and replacement of the concrete. And the other is a modified, so we're tearing out the six or eight panels that are most deteriorated and then coming in with a three inch asphalt overlay. And using your existing base, that base has been there for a long time. Rough numbers are, again, we'll see how this goes out to, once we get bid numbers back. But with the asphalt overlay option with these replacing six or eight panels is 80 to 90,000. A full concrete removal and replacement back to six to seven inches of concrete is a little over 200,000, just off the cuff. So I believe the spec we're going to be back and recommend to go bid is that option or the modified option. Clearly get a good 15-year life out of the clearly 15 years. And then with the asphalt, so then you'd come in and do a overlay like we do other street maintenance and you could replace that asphalt two and after three times for $200,000 plus. I want to give you a heads up as we were out there, we had our street, some of our street personnel and others meeting with the engineers, so little preliminary information for the March 5th meeting. Speaking of parks, Tony Kramer, Assistant Park Superintendent succeeded in getting his CPO or Certified Pool Operator License. So we now have two certified pool operators, so Tim Miller and Tony Kramer. We had applied for the USDA grants for street work as well as some additional mowers with parks on airport and that's for over the next five years. And I know we communicated written to you, but letting you know as well as the public as we were granted that half a million dollars for next year's street work. Plus 54,000 matched towards mowers for our parks and airport. Again, hats off to Jane and team for pulling that information together and continuing to, when we have 35% money, we should, knowing that these expenditures are going to come up anyway in the next few years, so just confirming that we did receive those and I believe the mayor has signed or signing those, which you'd approved the applications earlier.
Great work finding those grants.
Yes.
Getting those completed. Those states taxpayers a bunch of money.
That is, that's the end result of it. Pull up another, hopefully. On March 15th, March 14th, so two weeks from yesterday, we'll have a public meeting inviting the public to review our draft from the steering committee on our conference plan goals and vision. And that will be from 5 to 6, we'll have a short time of presentation overview on projects in progress, where we've come from the last 10 years. And then allow public comment on the seven goals that have been stated from the steering committees, all still in draft format, but as part of the public input process. It'll be from 5 to 6 PM on the 14th. And any of you, all of you in attendance would be great. But one of our fast, last public review sessions with the comp plan.
Gene, will that have a, like a Zoom option or an electronic option?
It won't.
To participate?
Not sure how we quite accomplished that, but it won't.
We can FaceTime.
Yeah, we could, maybe Troy can FaceTime you.
I'd rather have another meeting that night.
Live on site.
We'll record it for you.
We recorded.
Also, next, expect at the next meeting we'll have Scott McGlaughlin and Scott Pigsley from the airport. They presented to the County Board of Supervisors this morning and requesting some ARPA money for improvements at the terminal building with windows and ventilation. Yet in addition, they took the opportunity to provide an update on the airport and think it would be helpful, so inviting them to the next meeting as well as we have early in the agenda to provide a briefing and update to all the council. Did a real nice job of that this morning and the public would find value in that as well. Last couple of items in your packet and also reviewed recently by the Public Health and Sanitation Committee was the Nutrient Reduction Feasibility Report that was prepared by Bees and Kim. Every five years, the DNR, as you may recall, requires that about nitrogen phosphorus plans. But as you saw in your packet, the Public Health and Sanitation Committee recommended moving forward with submitting that DNR, so that has been completed and done by March 1st. Just to bring closure to that. And last two items I have are just reminder of the employee appreciation banquet or recognition, which will be on Friday, April 8th. Believe we've heard from everyone for that. And then always appreciate your support, so.
Where would that be, Gene?
So I thought maybe one of you might bring that up this evening. In terms of full disclosure, I'm sure Todd Beline will comment on the great response and turnout to the chamber banquet. I'll let, I'll save the eight block again.
Where is that at?
I did, I drove my wife to another destination before I arrived to Turkleston, thinking that the banquet was at another destination. I was on tunnel vision and had my whole day mapped out, so thanks for bringing it up, Jay.
Just wanted to make sure. We need to sign somebody to you that night to get you there.
Yeah, a lot of good ammunition for my wife as well the last few days. And then lastly, March 16th through 18th is my annual opportunity to network with other peers and colleagues at our winter meeting with our city managers. That'll be in Iowa City, so I'll be gone that Wednesday through Friday. But appreciate your ongoing support of my development and networking, so. Other than that, any comments or questions?
Any more comments, Jay?
I'm good.
Nope, satisfied. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Gene. Appreciate the information. For my report tonight, I just have one thing I would like to recognize Bob Beyond. He told me today that this is his final meeting with employment with the Harlan Newspapers. And he is moving on to new challenges and opportunities and of, he guesstimated approximately 4,500 meetings during his tenure with the newspaper between all the governmental bodies in Shelby County and that he's attended and covered and written about. So best wishes to you, thank you for all your
Thanks, Mike.
Even-handed, some unpleasant meetings and some unpleasant coverage, but for the most part pleasant things, I think, but you've always been fair and straightforward and
Appreciate it very much.
Kept the public informed, helped us inform the public on what we have going on here. Again, good, bad or indifferent, so appreciate your support and best wishes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm in the city stats. Almost had enough meetings as we got
Yeah. Appreciate your support over the years and getting our information out.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's a tough job. That is all I've got, so at this time I would ask Todd Beline if he's got any updates from the chamber he would like to make.
Just a couple of real quick items first, as Gene mentioned, just a really quick thank you to everybody who came out Friday night for our annual banquet. It was a great night, wonderful food from Main Street Market up in Panama. Shelby Book came in and took some photos for us, did a great job. Really good energy in the room and it was just, just a really fun night. It was great to be all together again. That just was really enjoyable. Just congratulations to our award winners. Shelby County Fair Corporation was our nonprofit of the year award winner. Lonely Oak Distillery was our new chamber member of the year. Victoria Station riding the wave of their tenderloin victory was our new business, I mean, excuse me, our business of the year. And then finally, Ed Getzinger was our citizen volunteer of the year and great award to be able to give Ed, very, very deserving of that award, so.
And should have received Smile of the Year Award as well.
Yeah, yeah, so just, just a great night and appreciate everybody who donated items for the auction, everybody who came out and attended and now we're already looking forward to next years. Also a note as we're coming into the spring, just a reminder to folks at the Southwest Iowa Housing Trust Fund, which goes through SWIPCO, does have a fund to help with down payments for, especially for young families who are looking to buy their first home. There's a $4,000 fund that they can achieve. They can earn up to 80% of the median income in our county to be able to apply for that fund. The nice thing about it is, is it's a forgivable fund, so as long as you stay in your home for five years, the loan is forgiven. So just for young families who are thinking about maybe getting into a home in the spring, you start looking at homes that are open on the market. If you have any that you know, just remind them that there is this opportunity through the Housing Trust Fund through SWIPCO.
Todd, we've been, I'm glad you brought that back up, because we've been starting to put out, did you know on our City of Harlan Facebook? That would be, I believe, a great one to put out on our did you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get that to you.
Would you mind sending that to maybe Jane?
What I've ordered to do was in the
Jane and I and you can get it on the list.
Yeah, over at SWIPCO, we were lucky enough to bring on CJ Peterson. He's our new communications person and we're going to have a newsletter now that goes out with information such as this, so it's going to be very, very helpful. And in addition to that, any local contractors who are interested in doing some lead abatement, SWIPCO now has a lead abatement program and there's really not very many people in this area that are, you know, licensed to do that. So they can go through SWIPCO, we will help cover the costs of their lost wages and, you know, hotel, that type of thing when they go to the training. And so if we do have local contractors who'd like to make that another, an additional service that they can provide in the area, they can just give us a call at SWIPCO and make sure that we get them into the program. With that, I already have the Carol and Debbie working on our next big event, which we will bring back the Administrative Professionals Day. We haven't done that for a couple of years and that'll be in April, so looking forward to having another great gathering that day. Any other questions for me?
Looks like you got us all covered.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. I see Ken, Ken Weber with HMU has joined us electronically. Ken, would you like to give us an update?
Sure, you bet. We got our budget approved last week, so that's been, information's been provided to the city clerk to include the city budget. We also heard from Regional Water, they're working on a possible tie-in with Council Bluff through their Minden Water Tower location, which may provide some backup for HMU on a contingency basis. We're still, it'll depend on what they come up with on their feasibility study, what we may or may not be able to do, but that won't help us out this year, but it may help us out the future as far as water resources go. And of course, we are looking at, under current conditions with drought and declining aquifer, we are looking at water conservation measures again this year. So we intend to implement a water watch April 1. And that's all, of course, all dependent on the conditions at that point in time, April 1. But it basically is, is the off hours for jabber water in gardens and that type of thing between 8:00 PM at night and 8:00 AM in the morning to avoid our peak hours. So that information is going out to the public. Then also on our, we had an alternate proposal for electric distribution in conjunction with our new well project. And this is a loop fee that was required by the EPA for backup power to the water to the South Well Field. And we were able to come up with an alternative design that potentially could reduce the costs on the electrical side. But the big impact based on availability of single phase equipment is it may allow us to bid the project as early as June of this year. That's dependent on the final core of engineer permit. But potentially bid the project in June, start construction September with a possible completion by the end of this year. So it gives us a little bit of a, if that does hold true, even if the construction carries into early 2023, we may be able to avoid any future water conservation measures 23 and 24. So anyway, it looks promising at this point. We'll continue to monitor that and report to the city, so that's all I have at this point in time.
Ken, this is Gene, just for what's all included in that project? Just so.
Uh, that's, that's basically the, the raw water project basically is to replace the piping in the well field. A lot of that piping is the old original piping, it's corroded. It's, we, based on flow projections and flow studies, we did, some of that old pipe maybe constricted as much, or restricted as much as 70%, 60 to 70%, which may be impacting some of our water supply. But also it provides, besides piping, it provides for four new wells in the South Well Field.
Thank you, Ken.
Any questions for Ken? We appreciate your continued efforts toward the water problem. I mean, you can't, can't solve all of it, can't, can't regulate what falls out of the clouds, but do what we can down here on Terra firma, so thank you.
You bet.
Any comments by the council tonight? Comments, questions? So nobody in the public, anybody online that's got any questions? Okay, don't see any or hear any, so I will adjourn the meeting, thank you.